This government meeting is brought to you by Eastworks and our local cable subscribers.
So, uh, Connie's going to be late. We'll start the meeting. Time waits for nobody. Um, thank you for setting the minutes. I'll move that we approve the minutes at eight ten. All in favor? Bye. Okay. Mayor, do you have any communication other than what's on the agenda?
I do not.
Public speak. This person Nicole's otter. Is that your otter?
Kick her out. Yeah. Kick the otter out. I, I.
I have to. Should I do that?
Yeah. Yeah, go up to the corner of the Nicole aid otter AI and it should give you the opportunity to block it from.
I just removed it from the call.
That's okay. That's it.
It's like a transcribing service, right?
Yeah, and I don't know how to get rid of it.
Well, how about our esteemed, uh, IT director?
So, not that I couldn't ask Karen, but I'd rather her focus on getting the new piece of software. And I, and if I can just boot out the otter, I'll live with that for a little bit.
How do I make that? How do I make that so that it's smaller?
It's your view. Change your view.
My view on my thing or on that?
On that. That's just, that's just a, now that you're showing the, a screenshot or whatnot.
What does this do? No, I don't want to do that. Change layout?
Yeah.
Pile?
Spotlight?
What is spotlight doing?
The person who's talking, or you can do a sidebar.
Sidebar is probably the one you want.
I think that works. No, it's still.
No, just, yeah, try, hold on. We're gonna go back and try.
Back to my screen. But now if I make this bigger, no, it doesn't help.
So put, put your screen on your computer to full screen.
On this computer?
Yes. Right up. No, the actual document. While in that corner, left corner.
It is on fullscreen. It's not the document. It's, it's what's on, what's on here.
Oh, I think that's the best. Lindsay's gonna get us to Google School. Seriously.
Oh, that's cool.
Yeah, to learn how to do this stuff. Try.
This is tiled.
Yeah, that's worse.
I think sidebars is as good as you're getting.
Yeah, I was gonna say sidebars.
Wait a minute. See if you can help me do it. All right, go sidebar. That's all I can do.
Yeah.
Okay, uh, Public Works. First of all, I want to say for the publics, for the record, city council authority is to only review the budget, approve it as the mayor submitted it, or cut it. We can cut individual budget lines if we want to. Um, rarely done in my history, but we can't cut the budget. If we do cut the budget, the budget must be balanced. Therefore, our team, Hadal and Jessica, must find a way to balance the budget. So we can't. If that actually passes the council, it would require another vote after the budget is. Um. Good, you're here. I wanted to ask, for the longest time, we voted on budgets right at the meeting. Then we stopped that, I think, when Bill Lynch was on it. He wanted to have the votes at the end. I have no problem voting on a budget. There's nothing in here that the three of us see is a problem, voting tonight. I'd love to get rid of that last meeting. However, I'm willing to wait. One of the reasons is you can absorb the budget and you might have something you want.
Point of order?
Yes.
Did you open the meeting?
Yes, I did. You were in there.
I was busy. I was busy. Okay. My apologies.
I didn't hear either. Well, you both weren't here and you're not on the committee meeting, so.
Just wanted to make sure. That's all. Thank you and sorry.
From both.
Yes.
You know, children I have to deal with. Anyway, um.
That is so. But I'm not gonna say anything, so.
Anyway, the reason we did that was to give time if people wanted to make any suggested cuts to the budget. Um. So my thought is I'd like to ask the committee to vote each night if it's possible. Tom?
I'm fine with that so long as, if it comes to the end and we have any second thoughts on anything, we can reconsider it. You know, if I vote tonight on this and then in three weeks I'm sitting there and be like, oh my God, what about this thing? Then we can cross that bridge when we get there, but it is not.
We could ask more questions.
Sure.
But the vote was because we wanted to look at possible amendments to the budget.
Right.
And I, in my many years, it's rare that there were any. There was that one year with Bill, but what do you think, Karen?
I mean, I kind of feel what Tom just said. You know, I don't want us to, and again, I'll be fully transparent. This is only my second year in the budget, and so I don't know what if two things do come up. So I, many years of experiences you do and, and I, I want to be respectful of that. And at the same time, I, I don't know, right? And so if we say yes to the budget and it does come towards the end, I mean, can't we revisit that? Like, I just want to make sure that we can revisit things.
President Gomez, what do you think?
Um, I believe you should go at the end because we don't have first the revenue budget. We don't know how much is going to be the revenue to compare to these numbers. And if any.
You mean we, we, that it's in the budget?
We'll be looking at that, but we need that information from, from Hadel.
That's on main point four.
Yes, it's, but it's already in the budget. We can look at it now and if you want it to. The revenue that they are presenting as balancing the budget is in that.
This is, this is how the mayor is gonna expend. Use the money, but we don't have any information how, how much money we're gonna get.
But the mayor and Hadal have to estimate the revenue to balance the budget and they've done that already.
Correct, but it's our deal with the city council. Appreciate both.
I know, we are.
That's what I'm saying. Like, we should.
Okay, I see what you're pointing. All right. Well, we'll wait till the end.
I know that I don't trust Hadel and the mayor, is we should do our jobs and take a look.
Okay.
And then we'll vote.
All right. Forget that. Okay, budgets. This is the Department of Public Works numbers, and I wanted to give Greg a chance to say anything about his department. Um, this is a regular department, not enterprise.
Yeah. Um, so what you'll see is building operations and highway, streetlights, traffic. Uh, this is, but it's really pretty straightforward. We, um, negotiated a new collective bargaining agreement for the next few years with, uh, the larger of our two, um, union bodies in the DPW. So some, just some of that increase, you see that increase reflected in the salaries through, in the highway, especially in the highway division. It doesn't apply to the building operations staff or not, or not union at this point. And other than that, it's, it's really just the three percent increases across the board that the mayor, um, has us to pass that could repair the budget with. And, and a few things here and there that have gone up. Trash, suppose was one, I can name.
All right. The highlights, I'll go through each line and the highlights are my questions. I always question what are big jumps, not saying, just to, so they're explained. Um, I wanted to say that this line actual, I believe, is second quarter numbers. Hadal?
Yes, one nine two zero. That's part of the general government.
No, this is.
Building operations?
This is Department of Public Works.
Yeah, it falls under them, but it's the general government.
I understand that, but it's.
I think it's questions about the actuals being low.
No. Yeah, what, what, this building operations is under Greg, so that's why we're talking about it. It's in the section of Public Works.
On the budget?
Yes, it is.
Oh, okay.
Should it not be?
I, I go off of the summary. And summary, and I go off of the.
Cause here's, here's the, here's the front page. And it's, and then we go down to building operations is the first thing we hit. Oh, that's good.
Sorry. This one?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Don't we have that? We do not have that, right?
Yes.
I have, there's a summary in the budget at the beginning. I don't know what you mean by summary.
So you have a looking one?
Yeah. Okay, uh, anyway, the actual numbers here are not at their actual. May I? May I? The actual numbers, Hadal, that I'm pointing at here under actual fiscal year 23 are probably from February. Or they're not, in other words, they're not up to date.
They are not up to date. I do not know if it's from February or January.
Whatever. It's just that in order for them to be actual, the actual FY 22 is more accurate to what was spent a year ago. But the actual FY 23, so everybody knows when you see low numbers, only half of this has been spent. That's because it's reflecting half of the year. I understand. Okay. So my first question is building operations full time. Is this a new position?
Yes, we did add a second full time building custodian.
And that was in the pay plan we just approved, I assume. Okay. Um, second one that I have a question on. I don't have a question on any of these numbers, and then I'll, I'll just move to you guys when you, if you have a question. A hundred and fifty thousand for building operations solar. Can we explain to the public what we're paying for now? You know, it happened before.
So some changes were made to the, uh, solar agreements that the city is involved in and and the, the city pays, building operations pays the electric bills for all the city buildings for the hall, fifty paces. I mean, all, all of our DPW buildings we get.
Not the schools.
Not schools.
Okay.
As such, with the way that the solar agreements were renegotiated, we are no longer receiving credits on our electric bills.
On some of them.
Um, yes, and the city's receiving, um, checks from EverSource.
We are.
Yes, and those are going into account and we do not, we cannot access in the middle of the fiscal year to pay people. So it's a.
Can we discuss this?
Yes, it's why I had asked for some appropriations earlier in that year.
Right, okay. It's just a number I wanted people to hear about. Okay. Um, why did this jump from twenty-nine, one-twenty to fifty-five thousand? This land has professional technical services. We're known.
This likely tied to the solar agreements also.
Okay.
For the, some of the, we have to pay a company called Constellation and we also pay, geez, I can't think of the name of the other.
Verinda?
Possibly.
In the.
And we need more funding.
I'm not throwing a name out too.
Oh, the other thing. I also would ask the mayor for some more funding there for, um, age, for, to have an HVAC tech, tech, jeez, I'm sorry, an HVAC company, uh, begin performing preventative maintenance, quarterly preventative maintenance on our buildings because of the investment that we've made. It probably should have been happening for years. However, with the investment that the cities, uh, made in these, in City Hall, the safety complex with the Honeywell project, that needs to, that needs a higher level of maintenance than it's had in the past. Um, we've also contracted with a landscape company to help take care of the grounds here around the hall and the safety complex. These buildings just need more attention than they've got, than they've had, um, in past years. And especially with the HVAC system, I want to make sure we're doing everything we can to maintain and keep the buildings comfortable and the systems operating, the, the way they were designed. I mean, we've had, i- i- in the work that the Honeywell folks have been doing, we found vents stuck shut, multiple vents stuck shut in this building. Um, louvers that exchange air in the safety complex with fresh air also seized that from just years of not being properly maintained. Because of this type, really, I mean, we have the two full-time custodians, but they're not HVAC technicians. So what I've worked on setting up is a, a program with a company called N Core Services will be coming quarterly, uh, beginning in July. We, you know, I'm sure the budget will be approved the way that we put it together. It'll be coming quarterly beginning in July to, um, change filters, check louvers, uh, just go through to make sure the belts are tight and things are functioning the way they're supposed to on the air handlers and, um, and we're just really taking care of our equipment. That definitely a good portion of those that, that results in.
I have no other questions myself on building operations to either the consultants, consultants, or anybody.
May I comment?
Yes.
Um, just on the landscapers and, and why we're doing that, um, the, one, the city's commitment to, um, permaculture and native planting, that just, it requires somebody who has access to lower prices, but also is only doing that. And with the two folks we have in that department, they have so much to do because the maintenance, the floors, the stairs, um, literally gluing together railings on, on stairways. So I, Greg and I kind of talked through it and said, let's, let's see if we can get a smaller contract for the landscaping on fifty and thirty-two paces and plant native plants. And, um, in the past, you see plantings by a very well-intended volunteer and then they die and it, yeah, and they're not necessarily native, you know, so we, it sounds, yes, I guess the, for the public, yes, we can cut our own lawns, but we want to keep up with the cracks and the weeds and have plantings that reflect the commitment to permaculture.
Okay. Anything from our counselors on building operations?
Stay far away. Oh, I asked. I'm sorry, I'm taking a look. There's so many numbers. Just, just for, um, for the public to understand, what is the, the DPW stipend? I'm not gonna wanna say that we're gonna cut it, but I just, that way people understand why it's nine hundred dollars or what is there.
In building operations?
Yeah. I don't understand. Sorry. I had the wrong page. Sorry.
Can we, can we get there?
My bad. My bad. My bad.
All right, let's go to administration now. Four, zero, one, zero. This is where we are. This is, uh, administration expenses. Reflects a small increases which are probably pay plan adjustments and co- union contracts. Or is this? There is a union for administrators.
No union.
Okay, okay. What page did I was it?
This is page eighty.
Eighty?
Mm-hmm.
No, this is page sixty-three.
I'm on page. Are we on different things?
I'm on page. I, I have the budget as submitted by the mayor. No. Sixty, this is sixty-three.
I have what was on the city website and on that PDF, it's page eighty-one.
Well, I hope they're the same.
What are the other twenty pages? I think numbers seem the same, so I'm not.
Okay. Is this the nine hundred dollars you were questioning? Uh, President Gomez, BPW stipend?
Yep. That's a monthly stipend that Board of Public Works members receive.
Um.
Oh, it's BPW.
And I think they get, each get thirty dollars a month.
I keep trying to raise that.
For being on the Board of Public Works.
Or, oh, for the BPW, okay, yeah, that's what they cut.
Okay, I have no other questions on this. Anybody?
Just to confirm that, um, the, the, the increases we're seeing in pay here, those are just the pay plan, it's the regular things, so, okay. Yeah.
We're gonna see that throughout the budget.
Right. I, I think that in general, like, I'm expecting every salary item to go up, but if it's going up for some reason other than that, like, if we're bringing in a new person or whatever, that's something that I want to know. So, just so that I can make note of it, uh, in the minutes.
In operations, there was one new.
Right, so that's, if I'm like, so that's just whatever. Yeah.
For all of our DPW budgets, that, that's the only new, you'll see.
Okay, then I won't ask about it.
So in engineering, I'm jumping to engineering. Okay, engineering. That's a pretty big jump, and I assume it's because there is a salary increase through pay plan.
Yeah, yes, the vast majority of the entire engineering budget is there.
And how many people is that?
Two.
Two people?
Two full-time engineers, yeah.
So it went up from one fifty-eight. It's a twenty-six thousand dollar increase.
That's a personal.
Yeah.
Just on the next one, the cell phone allowance. I thought all of our cell phones and everything kind of went to IT. So is this a separate thing?
So not.
Okay.
Um, the staff receive a stipend basically for using their personal cell phone for city business.
Okay.
Not all staff, but the, in the DPW, the foreman supervisors get it, um, and both.
I have nothing else on this. Fuel expenses. It's only going up four thousand, but which is interesting.
Uh-huh.
How do you, like, forecasting that?
Yeah, I thought it was gonna go up a lot, to be honest.
It's very difficult because I don't want to ask for more than we need and the mayor wants to have a balanced budget together. Um, and you just kind of, we see what happens and, um, fortunately, our, what we pay for fuel, there is an allowance for it to fluctuate on our, on the contracts that we have in place. So it's not that, certainly not need to make a budget for. It's just less than it was at this time last year.
Okay, moving on to highway. Highway, the salaries are all bricks. It's not a big jump. It's thirty thousand. For how many FTEs do we have there?
In the highway department? There is short two right now. Um.
But do you budget for filling them? Are they?
Oh, yes, a budget to be filled, yeah, yes. Um, full-time, we've got the supervisor, foreman, two special heavy motor equipment operators.
What is standby duty?
On-call pay for our staff to be available twenty-four seven. For one staff member in each division of DPW to be, to be on-call and available twenty-four seven to respond to an emergency anywhere in the city. A tree comes down.
Is that a big console? Is that in a new contract or something?
Yes, we put that into their contract.
Into a new, new contract.
Yes. Uh, we, it's been in a union contract for the water and sewer divisions for the past couple of years.
But it's not on the highway.
It hasn't been. We negotiate, we felt this old, you need to have people available to respond. A tree comes down, we need barricades, car accidents, there are stop signs get taken out. Um, this, the highway department is fairly large situation. When it does arise, I don't have anyone to get in, in touch with. It's a, it's a major challenge. We have to have people available at, where we have sewer backups. I was out of town and couldn't get, this was years ago, but couldn't get, it's one o'clock in the morning and my phone's ringing. I'm in Boston and it's like, and I can't find someone to respond. Finally, somebody to call back and respond, but it's the situation that can come, uh, without having staff on the ball, so.
May I ask a question about this, actually? And I understand that this is collective bargaining and, and I'm, I'm, I try to be very fair, you know, so I'm just gonna preface this, this saying that. So when I'm looking at uh, overtime, for example, and I see thirty-seven thousand dollars, um, and I think about, how, how often are people on overtime, would you say?
It depends. I mean, we'll do a project that you want to get done in a day and you can't finish it, um, and they'll save you a few hours. If they do get called in after hours, they can, they have a four-hour minimum in their contract for coming in, whether it's to barricade a street or a tree came down or.
And is that based on their?
Hourly.
Hourly wage, yes. Yeah, cause I just, I'm just looking at other departments and I see hundreds of thousands of dollars and.
In overtime.
And overtime, and I think, whoa, you know, I see folks out late at night or they get called in something and I just want to make sure the.
You'll, you'll see higher overtime amounts in like, in water, sewer, uh, but the, the amount on highways relatively low because a lot of their overtime is funded through the snow budget. A lot of, a lot, I guess what I'm getting at is a lot of the overtime that the highway division staff puts in is dealing with, with snow operation.
Okay, yeah.
But they do get called in for other emergencies throughout.
And I'm curious about that. You have third departments too. I just, I just.
Yeah.
I, I, I think that people are very dedicated and that's, those are really hard jobs. Um, and the fact that if there's a break or something like that and at the waste treatment plant and people are out there for hours, you know, that's, I just want to make sure that people are fairly compensated.
Uh, they, yeah, I mean, we're, I do too. I want people to want to work for our DPW.
Absolutely.
One of the things I, I have to really focus on because it's extremely difficult to hire people for our positions.
Yeah, absolutely.
Uh, you know, I've just lost two, lost two employees in the highway division in April. Um, we're losing one to retirement in July and I anticipate losing another one also to retirement by the end of the summer. So,
Right.
Um, you know, I like to think our salaries and our, you know, total compensation package is fairly competitive with other surrounding cities, but they're facing the same problem. So they're making it a little more enticing for people to, you know, they're, it's not, it's just, I guess it's just not easy to, to bring people in.
Sure, you know, this is, I'm sorry.
Um, this isn't the time or the place to have this conversation, but I'd love to talk to you about that at some point in the future about, like, we, in my day job, that's some of what we look at is like, what are the things that are, what are the impediments to people? You know, there's plenty of people in the city who definitely make less.
Sure. I mean, one thing, one of them is like, you have to have a CDL and hoisting license to do.
Right.
You know, seventy percent of the duties in the highway division, drive a big truck, run a, a loader. So one of the things we've done to try to work around that is, um, fill couple positions with laborers, people that we can, we're hoping to bring in and bring up and through the, it helps develop into a career for them.
Right.
Um, so, and actually, one, we actually just hired a resident that is coming in as a laborer, starts with us on the twenty-second to take one of the positions in highway. So, and someone that we spoke with about, you know, coming along through the field and, uh, like, I see me asking you guys for education funding or something to bring people along, cause that's, it's really, I think, what we need to, what we need to do.
Right, absolutely. I just want our budget to reflect, you know, a commitment to our, our workers that is equitable, right? So I just want to acknowledge that.
So here's professional service line. I have a question on it. Seventy-five and twenty-two. We budgeted twenty-nine and now we actually spent more than that. This is actual for half the year. So I'm assuming this is dealing with all of the projects you have to bring in, highway professional services. What is that?
Uh, a lot of, a lot of work, you know, for Al Pot Horn, they have to have a, um, traffic control with us, you know.
Okay.
Another thing we do there, sometimes it's highway department work, sometimes it's, um, uh, that a lot of things, like last year on highway, I had to spend some money disposing of old waste oil, um, and cleaning. This year, we had this, uh, cleaning the waste oil separator hasn't been cleaned in years. There's, there's a lot of things that we have to call in outside contractors to help us with that. You just need expertise to, you know, the right equipment to do things.
So traffic control is not the police department?
It is, yeah.
So that's not there overtime? That comes out of here?
We have to pay for police details from our.
And that's how like Verizon has something going on. They pay for police. But they're trying to do civilian traffic control, which would be a lot cheaper for departments, right?
I'm not sure how much cheaper it'd be.
No, it actually won't be any cheaper.
And one thing that where it is, I, I don't know if I, comforting is the right word, but it's, it's great for my people to have a uh, trained police officer in the road with them when they're working because it's not.
They feel safer.
Dangerous. Yeah, and people don't care. I mean, um, working up in the road myself, it, it's not, um, having a trained full-time police there to help is, is, uh, it's, it's, it's greater.
Okay, we were just talking about this in ordinance and the way that the police union contract is set up. They get the first shot at. They get the first shot at it and then retired. Police get the second shot at it and then civilians will get picked if they can't find anyone from those troop, but no matter who they get, it's the same rate.
Really?
Yeah, that's the deal we have.
But the, the traffic control officers have been very helpful because there's a lot of work going on. We have a lot of work to do. It's a larger pool to pull details from. As we've in the past had to cancel projects because we couldn't get traffic detail. So.
Yeah.
But the safety item is a very good point.
Yes.
Very good point. Uh, moving on to this is the equipment or.
Motor repair?
No, this is, wha- whatever this is, this is the, well, that's the conclusion.
It's still highway, okay.
Right, it's still highway. I love, I always love this. This is the last time I'm gonna see this, but the term bituminous concrete. It's kind of a contradiction in terms.
Yes.
That's asphalt.
Yes.
But the word concrete really is confusing.
It's the technical name for it. Go through a lot. I'd like to be going through more and we're trying, all the pot oil and plants and stuff that are out there, but I'm sure people, we got a lot going on, but we're, we're the guys over there doing a great job and the best they can, so.
Motor repair. I have no questions here to the increases are probably, uh, collective bargaining increases. Anything from counselors on that? President Gomez, anybody?
I mean, all these numbers seem fine. Is there anything noteworthy that you, any big changes in this other than?
No, not really. We do, we have the second mechanic with us now, but he's been for a couple of years, so.
Great.
So this salary is two mechanics?
Yes.
And they fix so the public knows all the vehicles in the city.
Everything.
Including police vehicles and fire vehicles too?
If we can, yeah, we do. What they, what Dennis and Naderi will do over there is just pretty impressive. The, the, the new K nine cruiser, they, they completely outfitted it in-house.
A lot cheaper, yeah.
And it's, uh, you know, they do a, a, a great job for us.
So we just had our snow, uh, increase and as you can see, the budget for snow is always two hundred thousand. As Hazel explained the other day, it has to stay two hundred thousand. If it's less, you can't deficit spend it, but thankfully for the last many years, we haven't had the deficit spend in snow because we have free cash to pay for it. But it's the only budget. And all cities and towns do this. They, they budget a, a similar amount and if you don't use it, you don't use it, but it's rare. Two hundred thousand is, I don't think there's been a year in which you've been less than two hundred thousand. Salt is costing a lot of money. We talked about that last night.
We ever have that year, it's probably a bad thing for the.
Yes. Streetlights. We have mostly LED streetlights.
Yes, yes, we do. And if we hadn't, you know, we did the large LED conversion project last year that was, uh,
Yeah, you had complaints about.
Wasn't the greatest, but had we not done that, we'd be looking at significantly larger numbers here to to just give the money to every sort.
But you get more lumen output for LED. I know this because I have the same thing in my business.
Yeah.
Lumen output of LED emitters now is increased a hundred percent. It's incredible. Same wattage, much more lumens.
But because we did that, we didn't have to ask for a considerable amount more to pump the streetlights.
Little off topic, but are we, does, does it feel, does it feel like that's evened out everyone's?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, if someone still has a complaint, send it and we'll, we'll address it. We worked hard to address all of them, uh, some of the LED fixtures that were too bright. We swapped with, uh, less intense fixtures. We re-shielded them everywhere that we had a complaint. We did what we could to resolve it. Some were challenging because one neighbor liked the light and one neighbor didn't. The best we could.
Welcome to American democracy. Uh, I have no questions on traffic, four two six zero. Trash hauling. And we did, we do the trash for everybody. There was fifty-five last year, it's sixty-six now, so it's not a big increase.
I thought you had said that this had, uh, gone up a bit, correct?
I've seen it here.
Oh, well, you kind of fifty-five to sixty-six. That's not nothing. It's twenty percent increase.
Yeah, I guess that's.
I'm seeing the requested.
Cemetery. This is John Mason. John's on the call. John, are you hearing?
Yes, I am.
Okay, um, unfortunately your name is, well, because, because of the way I'm doing this, you can't see his face. Want me to change that guys?
That's okay.
So we see John. We hear you, John. These numbers.
Main Street first.
We're doing Main Street Cemetery. I see a clerical salary increase. Um, is this because of a new, uh, well, explain it.
So we just flipped, cause we were outsourcing services. As you can see, um, we've, we brought it in-house. So it, you know, it was, it was eleven thousand, um, and eighty-five dollars and that was outsourcing. Now we're doing um, so my cemetery guys have taken over going over there. Like five hours a week between them. It's not a lot, um, for that area. Um, but they're able to, to get after and do, uh, burials and things like that. So that's, that's what that is. Um, it's, it's.
It's more in-house.
In-house work instead of outsourcing.
Good. Any other questions on the Main Street Cemetery? Brookside doesn't, it didn't look like it changed much. It's thirty-eight to forty-two. Is that just, uh, normal salary increase?
Yeah, just salary, um, with the new pay plan.
Okay.
And then, and then just the, you know, nominal, um, three percent.
Ex- expenses.
On expenses, yep.
Do you have a question on this, Tom? Sorry, um, John?
Well, can we, um, no, I don't have a question on that. It seems like these guys are having a whole thing about trash. So is this something we need to discuss further?
I, I wouldn't mind going back to it if you don't, if you don't mind for a moment. Make sure what I.
Sorry, John.
That's John.
We're done with cemetery, so, okay.
I know, I just.
Trash recycle hazardous waste. I have the requested amount is eighty-seven thousand, one hundred and fifty-eight dollars and sixty-two cents.
Where is that?
If you scroll over to the right.
You gotta go farther over. Or something. It looks like it's cut off.
It might go down a little bit.
Yeah, my thing.
I don't see anything. This is actual FY twenty-four. Streetlights, trash recycle hazardous waste.
Yeah, I am blue sea sixty-six.
Well, something.
Is this budget book not correct?
So I'm seeing a request.
Budget book that was sent to us.
Yeah.
I'm seeing requested twenty-four as sixty-six thousand.
Down the bottom.
Yep.
That's the actual twenty-four.
It's fifty-five.
Is the.
The adjusted FY twenty-three is fifty-five and sixty-six. Where did we get eighty-seven?
Right, because they don't, we're, we're thinking that maybe there was the wrong. There could be an error in the budget.
We had this a few years ago. Can we have that updated then?
Yeah, absolutely. I mean, I, I.
Is it on the website differently, Tom?
The one I got from the website looks the same as yours.
Yeah, I got the website also. I looked at the website.
Oh, well. But I think I see where the problem is too.
We, we think there's a line cut off because we have it when we print it, it's there, but I mean, this is a just to bring it up, I mean, this is a great reason not to vote every night, but because we have, at the end, we'll come back. I mean, you've done this in the past years and kept a running list of, okay, the last finance meeting, we have the issue with trash and then we can, we can fix it.
So I'm gonna write error in trash and.
It's the sub, it's the third subtotal. Is the third subtotal is the same as the first subtotal?
Yes, okay.
So we'll, we'll have that fixed.
What do you have here? So here, thirteen here, thirteen here.
Yeah, and it should be thirty-four and. Okay, well, we can fix that number, but at, at least this adds up, I think, correctly then, right? If that's what like, like thirteen plus forty. Yeah, and so if you added the sand landfill professional services, if that was what was in the item below, the thirty-four, then that would add up to eighty-seven. So it's just that that number should be thirty-four instead of thirteen. So we can at least discuss the the substance of what's going on here. It's just that there's a number that should be a different number, but both of those numbers are known to us.
So it is a larger increase, but that's what we were talking about even last.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's trash and all the expenses have increased. I've, I've even heard it in the private sector about just what else.
Which is what, the, the only that.
My fees have certainly increased.
Yeah.
Picked up from my damn house.
Five thousand dollar increase, uh, that what you caught was, wait a minute, and they realized it's more than that. So, good. All right. Very good point. We need to make sure we get the proper thing out there.
But that's just, is, 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 is the, that's really the cost because what we're doing with most of that is paying a third-party contractor to pick that stuff up.
Yeah, empty the dumpsters.
And it's the same contractors that do the res, you know.
Well, you, you, you have options, right? The different, people use different trash hauling companies.
Right.
Our spell republic service.
Okay.
All right, I'm gonna jump to enterprise because that's, uh, Greg, uh, John, then we'll get back to you, John, okay?
No problem.
Well, enterprise is second also on, um. Enterprise, anything you wanna say in general on enterprise, except that we need a new wastewater treatment plant like yesterday?
I mean, just so people are aware that, that the enterprise fund takes care of the sanitary sewer. Drainage. Uh, water and wastewater treatment.
And the one thing I wanna bring up so the people here is that enterprise is run like a business. It is paid for, not with tax dollars as much as fees, water and sewer fees. And those rates are going up because of the cost of maintenance, most of all.
Absolutely.
Apparational costs, but also the cost of maintenance.
Yeah.
And the board of public works is increasing that rate every three years. Is that?
Board of public works voted in a new three-year rate structure. The first increase goes into effect July first.
Okay, people should know that. So I had no major questions. I see salary increases from two ninety-four to three fifteen. I'm assuming that sewer, uh, collective bargaining. This is sewer. I didn't see any major jumps. I might have missed one, but, Tom, do you have anything?
I'm sort of playing catch-up. Sewer. The salary, that's again, just.
Collective bargaining.
Bargaining.
Water, sewer, wastewater treatment, highway division employees are all the same collective bargaining.
And here we have overtime, Tony, and that's because if the sewer line goes down, I gotta call them in at night.
Standby duty increased. Was that the contract?
Okay. It's not a major jump. Five eight to bottom line, five eighty-seven to six twenty-three. Going on to, uh, water. Again, this is a fairly large increase here. Well, not really. Thirty-some thousand. Is this all collective bargaining?
In their salaries?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay. Same thing on overtime, pretty much level funded across.
Any of these expenses, anything, I mean, none of them jump out as.
None of them jump out at me.
But anything interesting to report here?
No, I mean, we've just seen cost increases across the board for parts of duct line. It is everything we use to keep the water system up and operating has gone up considerably over the past couple of years.
And the bituminous concrete, when the water department has to dig up a pipe, that's where the, you charge it to, that budget.
Yep.
Rather than have one general highway department budget. Cause enterprise is separate if it's a water line rather than just the street being repaired. That's why it's separate. And okay. So there wasn't a big jump here. I mean, it's, it increased, but mostly the three percent. Um, wastewater. Again, this is collective bargaining, four fifty-four to four eighty-six. Standby duty, same thing. That, that's new contract.
Yes.
And that makes it easier for you when you get a call that the wastewater treatment plant needs help or sewer line is down or something. You find a person easily because you know the on-call.
We have someone on-call ready to respond. See if, if one of the wastewater side, something that may happen is a, uh, one of the wastewater pump stations may go into failure. And there are an automatic dialer will call out and we have a staff person that is on-call, required to answer the phone within uh, a certain period of time and then respond within a certain period of time. Uh, and what that will help prevent is a sanitary sewer overflow, uh, potentially, or any other emergency that could happen at the plant, either chemicals, chemical spill or and it, and it's all just to help them keep us in compliance with regulations and.
This is an interesting, I'm looking at chemicals, example of how this is FY twenty dumping, right? Up to ninety-five now. And that's just a year.
Yeah, we've seen some amazing increase.
Amazing, amazing supply costs going up all over the place. Lab supplies way up. If you look at FY. Okay, anything else on this, uh, counselors? Enterprise reserve fund. We rarely use that, as I recall. Tend to, tend to use free cash to cover things when we have a need.
Well, on enterprise side, between earnings, but.
I mean, yes, right.
Right.
It's reserves are only for end-of-the-year transfers unless it's a small note. Answer for enterprise, but we gotta run into that situation.
I guess that's it. Thank you, Dave.
No problem. Yeah, if anyone has any further questions, shoot me an email or anything.
Great, thanks.
John, I'm moving on to you. Of culture and recreation. Um, which is page seventy-five. Uh, you're not at the library and I'm very surprised I'm not here, but.
Yeah.
Was it inform them? Cause I don't think so, but.
Um, yeah.
It was on the website.
Yeah, I mean, usually you send us invitations and.
Well. For our purposes, just so, and watch this recording. The library's budget went up, um, from two twenty-two to two forty-four. And the required, state required is two twenty-four. So we're twenty thou, twenty thousand dollars over that. I think it's good. And I think we just gave them five hundred and ten thousand dollars, so. I'm surprised they weren't here. And I have no, nothing to say except that I'm okay with this. I think it's an increase.
It's a ten percent increase that I very intentionally put in, um, to start, um, I mean, we've had many conversations about the library and funding it, um, how to fund it, to help them with operations more and and it's hard and Chairman Riss, you've mentioned this a couple of times, that the structure of our library isn't the same as other fully public libraries, um, so the, this is a way to get them more operational money, um, in increments rather than a big. get the more operational money, um, in increments rather than a big hike. It's, and I, I told them it's not something you can depend on because, you know, this year, but, but it helps, so. I'm committed to putting an extra ten percent into this budget category, um, for my budgets as mayor.
Well, ten percent is more than the three percent you put across the board. I mean, it's more than most mini-budgets, so I think it's, it's good. Um, but the private part of their operation, they need to do as well as they can. And I was told by, I think Counselor Riley, there's a lot of library grants out there. And I guess they're getting a development person now to really search out those grants because city can't do it all. What do we fund? Fifty percent of their budget now or something like that?
Well, it's, it, it's, I mean, yes, kind of, it's complicated. Um, but I would say that the community interest that was shown has a value that's, it's really high.
Okay, I agree.
I, I'm more concerned, um, in future years that, that the library yet again will be an area that's seen as a, uh, an easy cut, not by this council, but I, I am concerned about that. So to, just one of the reasons why we asked, I asked for the the half a million plus operations and we have that agreement, so, um, so they could actually go after those grants for capital and, um, the new building.
Good.
I think it's great. I think, again, I think the opportunity to get the building on Main Street reflects the city's values and so I think that this is really.
It's a fantastic deal.
Yeah, and a great feel. And I think it, it really highlights what at East Hampton we're saying is important, so.
And it seems like, I mean, I don't want to get too the budget, but I think that it, um, yeah, when, when you got that kind of situation with the building itself, it seems like it would be foolish to not like move aggressively on just getting that synergy and.
And, and the current building was, you know, a barrier, like, you know, for a whole bunch of different reasons. And, and I know we've had budget conversations around, you know, operationally and supporting them, but then going back and forth on how to support the actual building where, you know, the, the repairs are many and ADA accessibility is band-aided together over there. I mean, it, everything needs.
They're putting up a new ramp as we speak. You guys drive down parks, if, you know.
Yeah, but that basement is.
Yeah, I mean, you can't, it.
There's no doubt.
Building, it's, it's a whole new niche on life and it's very exciting to be partnering with the library board and Williston North Hampton and, and with the cannabis money as the city to kind of put this together.
Okay, anything else on the library?
That's great.
Hi, John. You're, you're still here, John? You're sleeping?
Yep. I'm here.
He's sleeping.
So we have a, you, you are in charge of the parks and the recreation side. Um, I'm just curious, there's a, probably your staff deals with both. I don't know, right? It's.
Yeah.
You have pool stuff, you, you, your park people help with the pool stuff, et cetera.
Yeah, which, yeah. It's, um, only separate basically is considered the maintenance is on the park side, all the maintenance folks and then administration's on the recreation side.
So we have a pretty big jump in salary here. Uh, is that a new position being, been added? What, what is? From one oh, no, I'm sorry, it's not that big a jump. I'm.
No, though, that's just, uh, that's just pay plan.
That's all pay plan?
Yeah, that's just the new, the new pay plan structure.
I, I'm meant to look at this, okay. Um, why is it only six hundred dollars for part-time clerical? You don't need more clerical assistance?
Um, oh, we do need more, more clerical assistance. Uh, and actually, that's, that's kind of on my list for, for next year. Um, you know, currently, you know, that clerical is really pretty much non-existent. You know, I do, I do all the payroll. I do all the deposits. Uh, you know, I, I come to money, you know, on, on top of everything. Um, I do the green sheets, the billing, um, payments, all that stuff. Um, you know, this time of year, that phone rings every three minutes, if not more, um, and that takes a lot of Sam's time and, and she helps get Camp Nanatac going as well, so. Um, you know, in the future, I will be trying to probably look for something in a small twelve to sixteen hour a week position to kind of take some of that stuff off, off my plate. Um, you know, especially dealing with the, the one point two million dollar pool project, uh, coming up and staying on top of that. Um, is going to be a, a lot of work on top of all the other properties and everything else that I have to manage and oversee and answer every question regarding, uh, usage and, and expansion.
So we have a jump in temporary positions, but uh, you could explain for the public's use that there is some income that helps counterbalance this, correct?
Yeah, so on the temporary positions, that was, we added, um, actually, um, George, um, came out of retirement and is working twenty hours a week for us. We added a part-time position on top of, um, our pay plan, um, salary increases, um, in, in to that. And I'd like to, you know, acknowledge, uh, the finance committee, the mayor and city council, um, for stepping up and, and trying to, um, bring equity to, to wages for, for our employees. Um, you know, that's one of the barriers for us to, to hire, um, is, is seeing those, those wages. Um, so having everybody step up and, 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 and make a concerned effort to, to try to, uh, bring wages, um, closer to, to in scale. Um, it is, um, commended. I, and I appreciate it as a department head.
And, and we're, that, that, uh, additional part-time that's in parks, we're still in parks?
Yes, that's correct. Yeah.
But these are temporary positions, one hundred and fifty-three, I'm looking at there. Those are your summertime hires, right?
Yeah, so those are, um, thirty-nine week positions or less, but the most is thirty-nine weeks. So that's, uh, you know, we have.
Actually open.
Yes, we bring them in, um, the, right around St. Patty's Day and they get laid off a week before Christmas. For those, for those.
A week before Christmas? Wow, you're a real Grinch.
They actually like it. They, they wish it was a couple of weeks earlier.
Thanksgiving.
Exactly. They'd come in earlier to end earlier.
Mm hmm.
Okay. That's on parks. I have recreation here. Um, this is where your salary is, uh, lined up here and.
My salary, Sam's salary.
Sam's salary is at thirty-eight.
Yeah, temporary positions is, um, pool manager and lifeguards.
Okay. Lifeguards are getting a good boost, right, this year?
Yeah, yeah, they're getting a good boost, um, in pay.
How are they rated?
Uh, we are between seventeen and nineteen dollars. We also are giving, uh, year-end bonuses, uh, thanks to Williston. Um, gave us a check, uh, to distribute for year-end bonuses for anybody that works for us in the pool area and we also reimburse, uh, their lifeguard training as well.
Are we doing on?
Lifeguards.
Lifeguards.
So we have, we, we've interviewed through three or four, um, I checked in with human resources yesterday about, um, the offers, the, the, last I knew, the offers weren't presented to them yet and I mentioned that we need to, uh, get these offers turned around because it's, it's a challenge enough without waiting, you know, almost two weeks to get an offer out on a lifeguard. It, it, uh, we have another interview next week as well, so, um, we are, we continue to put it, put it out on Facebook, um, and they continue to put it out on the marketing, um, and that they do between Indeed and other sources, uh, so, um, but yeah, we, we need to, um, those types of positions need to be, um, you know, I, after we get done interviewing, I basically say, okay, here's the number and, and, and hire them because, uh, we don't want anybody to go anywhere else.
Does HR have to vet these lifeguards? Make sure they have Red Cross training and all that?
Yeah, so the, when, when, when they submit their applications, they submit their, uh, lifeguard, uh, qualifications, CPR, first aid, lifeguards certifications and when they expire, so we have all that documentation.
Question is, what's the, what's the turnaround time? Why is it takes so long to get an offer out? Do you know? I mean, what are they, what, what is HR vetting, I guess? Something we should look into.
I've looked into it. I need to know.
Because we need to hire lifeguards or we're gonna hear about it. Well, if you thought the library people were bad, don't.
Yeah, exactly. But I, I get it, I get, we, this is no exaggeration. We get thirty to forty emails, calls, or people stopping and asking about the pool opening. Um, it's, it's, it's one of those things that keep me up at night. Um.
Well, I'm glad to hear the mayor will he'll help you out here as much as possible to get these lifeguards hired.
I thought you were gonna say the mayor was gonna serve as a lifeguard.
He's hired.
We're gonna get.
I was gonna suggest the city council.
That's fair.
I think we actually are not allowed to do that for the charter.
I have snow, I have ski, ski Red Cross training. Will that work?
Okay, blow.
All right, anyway, anything else on recreation, counselors?
Looks good to me.
No, it's good.
You're not debt and interest, so I guess we're done. Is there anything I? Am I skipping anything?
We got everything that I put on the agenda.
If anybody has any questions or anything that come up, just feel free to reach out to me.
Thanks.
Thank you for your time.
Uh, thank you, John. Good luck with getting that, those pool guards.
Yeah, and the bids, um, our bids opening for the first part of the pool is, uh, two weeks from yesterday. Um, so we should, we'll have a bid number for the infrastructure that's out for the pool in less than two weeks.
Awesome. That work's not happening until after the season, right?
After the season, that's correct. Yep. Well, I'll keep everybody posted on that as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, our next meeting is Monday, five fifteen, apparently the website is saying five o'clock, which is a mistake. Hmm. I don't know why, but it is, so, uh, and Monday, we are dealing with public safety and human services. Public safety, uh, is all of our inspectors. BJ asked about that. Uh, I'll try to put up another notice. I hope we don't get here from the library. Why didn't we get told? Because I don't know. Is that my job?
I don't think we're objecting to anything in it, so I don't see why we need to march them all in to advocate for something that I don't think any of us have any.
As I said, we don't have the ability to raise a budget.
And I don't think any of us are talking about cutting it, so let's just, uh, I think we're good.
Um, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Jeez, I thought we'd be here an hour and a half. Okay, all in favor?
All right.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Hadal.
Thank you.
This government meeting is brought to you by Eastworks and our local cable subscribers.